We're going to call the meeting to order. Pledge of Allegiance?
Yeah.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation under the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Committee, Lemay will be joining us remotely due to geographical location. Kelly, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Lemay?
Yeah.
Mr. Docow? Mr. Sheehan? Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan? Mr. Getche?
Yes.
I thought it wasn't on there for a minute.
Kelly, do we have anybody registered to speak for the public?
I don't think so.
No. Nope. Well said.
Do we have any school committee communications? At this time, we're not going to have the report of the student representative. She's playing softball. So we all have it right in front of us. We can take a moment later on to read it. Can I get a motion to waive the reading of the minutes?
So will.
Just a second.
Just approved.
Just approved? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the expenditures?
Motion to approve the minutes of March 16, 2023.
Oh, of March 16, 2023, sorry.
Second.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve the expenditures of April 13, 2023? Expenditures of $4,350,49 and 9 cents.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yeah.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
Do we have a report of the general counsel? None? Report of the superintendent director? Yeah, Joe.
Thank you. The first item on my agenda this evening is that I'm happy to report that Greater Lowell Tech has been awarded an $18,000 grant to support CNC manufacturing programs from the Jean Haas Foundation in the amount of $2,500. I'm sorry, $18,000. $2,500 of these funds would be used towards sponsorship of a competition highlighting these areas such as Skills USA. A copy of the letter is in your packet. Excuse me. The next item on my agenda, I'm happy to report that Greater Lowell Tech has been selected as a recipient of the 2023 Grow More Good Grass Roots Grant in the amount of $500. We were selected because of the outstanding work our students in the Transitional Occupations Program are doing with gardening inside and outside of our school community. A copy of that letter is also in your packet. Next, I would like to inform the committee that Greater Lowell has once again been selected to participate in the Competitive Municipal Cybersecurity Awareness Grant Program. With the growing threat of cybersecurity, the program is geared towards providing proper training and threat simulation to our participating employees. And I think this is the third year that we are participating in the cybersecurity awareness program. Moving on to the next item on my agenda is the Cooperative Education Report. The report that was provided in your packet indicates 233 students, 182 senior students and 51 junior students participating in our co-op program as of the end of March. However, I'm happy to report that to date, we have 260 total students participating in co-op, 190 seniors representing 36% of the senior class, and 70 juniors representing 13% of the junior class. And again, a thank you to Stacy and the hard work that she does with getting our students out onto co-op. And a copy of that report is in your packets. The next item on the agenda, I'd like to ask the committee for approval for the 2023-24 School Committee Meeting Schedule. A copy of the proposed meeting schedule was included in your packet for review. And before we move forward, does anyone have any questions or concerns with the dates provided?
I think I have a question about the first meeting of the upcoming school committee calendar of August 24. I'm curious if we could just move it out to August 31 in case people are taking extra vacations or extending their calendar to enjoy the summer months.
So I think if I'm not mistaken, August 31, and I don't have the calendar in front of me, is that a holiday weekend?
It may be that there's no school that day because the teachers start a week before, and that Monday might be Labor Day.
Right, I was just asking. She's looking on the calendar.
Thursday, more than likely the school.
Technically, the 3rd was the 15th. I moved it to the 22nd. You could move it to the 29th would be the last Thursday of the month.
Oh, Thursday.
Yeah, because August 1 starts on a Thursday, so there's actually five Thursdays that month.
Okay, because this is indicating August 24.
Right, so we moved it because last year, I remember, we moved an additional week because I think we had requested for the extra week, so it was moved to that week. So that's why I moved it to the 22nd. Technically, it would have been the 15th.
Okay.
So I moved it to the 22nd. You have the option to request the 29th if you'd like. That's up to you guys.
Is that part of the law?
We have the 24th here, so that's a typo in the budget book.
August of 24?
Yeah, I'm looking at 2023, and I see August 31 is a Thursday.
Oh, I'm on 24. I see 24.
So has anybody moved? I don't have a problem with it. Extending the summer round just a little bit?
I don't care.
Don't mind it.
Is it pressed to you?
Yeah, they're still signed.
The school opens that weekend?
No, if we needed to have an emergency meeting, if something came up, we can.
We can call that.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
31st is fine.
What is the date of opening? 25th or 6th or 7th?
Can I ask what the change is?
So the teachers will start the 24th and 25th.
What's the final change?
So...
We haven't decided.
We haven't decided yet, but the August 24th would be the first meeting for the new school year.
No.
No, that's for the teachers.
Oh, you're talking to the teachers? And I'm proposing August 31.
Is that Labor Day weekend?
It's the Thursday before Labor Day weekend.
I mean, unless some people do a long weekend, I mean...
I mean, that would be up to all of us here. I don't... It's up to all of you.
Curtis, do you object to changing it to the 31st?
No, I'll support the majority of the committee. I don't have a yearly calendar right in front of me, although I could get one, but I don't see anything testing for me.
Doesn't he have an agenda?
Yeah, that's what he said. He has just had another calendar in front of him to look to see what falls on.
No, but doesn't he have one?
He does.
Yeah.
But it's so we have it there, right?
Yeah.
I got one.
Okay. Okay. So is it any objection to moving the first meeting to August 31st? Anybody? So Kelly, I guess we're going to move it to August 31st. Thank you. Any objection to any other dates? Okay. Yeah, roll call.
November 16th, how close is that to Thanksgiving? Is that, that wouldn't be the week of Thanksgiving?
No.
Thanksgiving would be the following Thursday.
Thanksgiving falls on a Thursday, yeah.
Yeah.
23rd, 16th is a Thursday.
Yes.
Okay. Take a roll call? Sure. Motion to approve the school committee's... Motion to approve the school committee meeting schedule?
Second.
23, 24.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
The next item on my agenda, I'd be seeking approval for two separate out-of-state travel requests. The first is for Dean of Students, Mr. Ron Versalone, to attend the Managing Adventure Programming Training at the High Five Adventure Learning Center in Bradenboro, Vermont. This training is for Mr. Versalone to recertify as our Challenge Course Manager. As Challenge Course Manager, he's able to provide training to staff who hold Level One certification, develop curriculum to train students to assist on the course by setting up elements and belaying for participants, and developing programming for faculty and outside groups such as the Lowell Youth Leadership Program, and to develop specialized programs for student groups focused on building leadership and community. The approximate total of this professional development is $1,400, which includes the cost of the training, the exam, the hotel expenses, the meals, and the travel reimbursement.
Motion to approve travel for Mr. Versalone?
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
The next item is for approval for travel is for two students and two advisors to attend the Educators Rising National Conference in Orlando, Florida from June 28 to July 2. These students who are going to be competing in this national conference were both freshman students who earned gold medals in the literature competition at the state conference, which is held at UMass Lowell recently, and they have advanced to the national conference. This is the first year that we have developed and been a part of Educator Rising, so we're very proud of our two students who have earned this privilege. And I'm asking for your approval for them to attend the conference with their advisors. The approximate total of $6,900 includes the cost of registration, the airfare, hotel, and meal expenses.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
And the final item in my report this evening is I'm seeking approval to support the decision to participate in school choice for the 2023-24 school year as outlined in our current admissions policy. This is something that we need to do annually to report to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, whether or not we accept the decision to accept school choice students.
Motion to approve school choice?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
And that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Mike, you're up. Go to the business manager.
My first item on my agenda tonight is asking for the school committee to approve the declaring a simulation mannequin from the Health Assisting Department as surplus. I think it's the first simulation mannequin we actually got at the school. It's about 10 years old and no longer functions.
Oh, my old friend, you're going to...
Time to put him out, and he's been replaced.
Can I get a motion authorized declaring the one simulation mannequin surplus to be disposed?
So move.
Can we do it in a second?
First impeachment.
Yep.
Mr. Lemay?
Done good service.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
No, Paul, you can't take that one.
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
All right, next on my agenda is a lengthy list of transfers. I haven't seen transfers in a couple of months because I've been working on the budget and capital projects around the building, so I'm doing a little bit of account cleanup, getting ready for the end of the year. But I've tried to give you a rationale for all of the additional expenditure on the right-hand side of the list, and if you have any questions about anything there, please let me know, or I'd be seeking a motion to approve the transfers as presented for the total of $977,153.32.
Do you have any questions?
Yes, I will.
I just have a question.
Good question.
I have actually two questions. The first question, cafe renovation equipment, Mike, it's a pretty large item, $167,000.
Yep.
What are we purchasing?
Yeah, the cafe that's downstairs that's run by the Special Ed Department, the Tops Program, the Transitional Occupation Program. We did a full renovation down there, got them two new pizza ovens, two new, I guess they're called like bakery case coolers for salad sandwiches, things that are grab and go for them. Trying to think of what else we did down there. New cabinetry, new countertops.
So really, the whole cafe was renovated mostly for new equipment and for the aesthetic look of the cafe to really make it look like a cafe. You know, the cafe services the entire school community and is quite profitable, and there's a lot of wear and tear on their equipment, so they were in need of new equipment. And some new things that they requested to sort of keep the cafe up to date with the current trends in cafes in the community, so they are just thriving.
And I heard it came out very nice, but I just don't know.
Yeah, welcome to go down there. And look, I can give you an example of the other day. It was so busy that I heard that they made profits of close to $1,000.
Wow.
So, yeah, so they do...
I hear they're doing very well.
They do very, very well. I think it's a great program, great interaction with our culinary students and our Transitional Occupations Program, and it's...
And two pizza ovens.
Yes.
So we're really moving up.
And now, and now they're able to sell pizza by the slice.
People.
So not only pizza in the entirety as a whole, but now by the slice. Some pizzas, coffees, they have...
Got espresso machines now.
Espresso machines.
Got a gelato maker coming.
Smoothies, gelatos.
They have paninis, stuff like that.
Get them all. I love it.
So it also gives them training on all this equipment, and it's great to see.
And this cyber cafe's been running for about eight years, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, close to since our building renovation. Since our building renovation, but it's really... Really...
It's grown.
It's grown.
It needs an update.
Yeah.
It's terrific.
To keep up with the trends and keep their kids trained in things that they can't...
How was the washer dryers doing?
Good.
Yep.
That program's still good, that's still running?
That's part of the program as well.
Did you replace...
I've seen the kids delivering the stuff down there. So it's all in-house, you know, the towels, whatever they need.
Yes.
And then they fold them, and then they bring them back to wherever they need.
Wonderful.
Cosmo, stuff like that.
It's wonderful we started it, it's wonderful that it's still being utilized.
And continues.
It's wonderful to see, and if you know anybody, any students down there, it's really something, you know? They're so proud, you know?
Can I ask a question? They probably already know the answer, but so like say that that particular day they made $1,000, other days they'll make less than that, but does that money get rolled back in to that?
Yes, it does. It's called...
You purchase more food and stuff?
Yep, everything from the culinary program by state statute has to stay within that program, so usually if they're making profit, it just goes right back into equipment purchases and things like this.
And then if there's tips, that goes somewhere else.
They hold that in a separate account for things like field trips they'll do.
Yeah, yeah.
Special events?
Yep.
Anything else?
Just one other question.
If you haven't been down there, Mr. Richardson, I would definitely recommend you experience. It's great.
And this might be a spinoff of the cyber cafe.
I mean, if you knew what was there to what is there now? For many years ago, when there was cafeteria kitchen and the walk-ins and the fridges and stuff, they took some of that stuff out. That's where the washer dryers...
After that was eliminated, there was this extra space that we wanted to utilize it in a way that would benefit students as well as the whole school community, so it's definitely...
Sure, and we have a full array of student body working there.
Oh, absolutely. It's fully run by, fully run by students. Like I said, stop by.
Sure. Love it. So I guess my next question is the Artisan AV Project. My guess is it's a spinoff of...
Separate project. In the actual, this is in the actual restaurant, the audiovisual equipment that was in there was not, was sort of functional. We'll say sort of functional, it wasn't really great. So what they did over the last, I think it's been probably, or it was six months, probably closer to the beginning of the year. They went in, they installed TV or monitors for presentations in the cafe in four different spots, new speakers in the ceiling, new audio system and mixer, new microphones set up so that now when we host events like the health board that comes in...
Greater Lowell Health Alliance.
Greater Lowell Health Alliance comes in, they have the ability to do true presentations and use it as like a true functioning meeting space now.
So sort of updating our function...
Sounds like an update that needed to happen.
Updating our function and capability and, yeah.
In order to represent our community and have a functional space.
I was recently, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I was recently showing someone some pictures, you know, of the event that we had when the board members retired, and they said, "Is that the dining room?"
Yes.
You know, the tables, the chairs, you know? I mean, you know, I was here back in the foundation when they started the place, and if you look at it now, and it's like...
It's come a long way, especially in the 10 years that I've been here.
And some of the dining rooms that we've been in, I mean, it's really amazing, really. Really is, I think it's well worth it, so.
Now they have the menus on the monitors every day, which is great.
And they have a lot of the kids from the cafe also working in there, you know, with some of the leadership, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so it's, everything's integrated.
It really is something.
And hospitality also works in there.
It really is something.
Cool. I have no other questions, I'm glad I asked them.
Anybody else have any questions for Mike? We have a motion to accept a budget transfer?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
All right, third item on my agenda is amendments to the FY23 budget, and I've broken this down a couple of different ways because two very different purposes for the reasons for the amendment. The first amendment we're looking for to the budget is the recognition of $168,626 in revenue from our state transportation reimbursement, and that's going to be used for the purchase of two new multi-function student activity buses, the short buses that we use for sports and those types of things. We started the process of looking for buses knowing there were long leave time earlier this year, and we got lucky. We got on the list before, we were looking at next year's purchase that went through the budget, but we actually got an allocation that's going to be coming as early as May. So the recognition of the revenue needs to occur because buses aren't net school spending eligible project or products, so to recognize the revenue to then use it for the payment of those buses. The second budget amendment is...
And Mike, that comes out of our transportation funding from the cities, towns, and state.
It does. This is actually from recognizing the reimbursement from the state, so when I put the budget together, I had budgeted an estimated reimbursement of just over $1 million in transportation. Our first payment for transportation reimbursement came in at about $740,000. Generally, they run maybe 45% on the first payment, 55% on the second, so looking at what we're estimating, my very rough estimate has no basis from the state or any knowledge of their budget and what's coming, but most often what I would expect from that payment is a total reimbursement of about $1.48 million in transportation reimbursement for the year. So by recognizing the additional amount, we'll still have a surplus that we can then either move to the transportation revolving account or let close to excess and deficiency at the end of the year, but it'll allow us to take advantage of the fortuitous situation in finding the buses available.
And we'll have our own mini buses, our own drivers for those mini buses, and we won't be running into shortages of...
No, we do a lot of our...
We use our mini buses for kids who are going out on community jobs, for our students in our Transitional Occupations Program that go out to websites.
Well, and the health programs, they go to dressing homes, stuff like that.
So we do a lot of, we use our vans. In addition, we also use them for sporting events.
Athletics has been really big with them lately just because of the driver shortages we've had.
Because of the driver shortage, so see, they are put to good use.
So let me...
And the ones that we have are very, very old, so we need to...
And how many passengers are the ones that we're purchasing?
Fourteen. Fourteen.
But eventually, these will be paying for themselves by us not using NRT, I would imagine.
Yeah, anytime we go out on a trip, I think the minimum's somewhere around 250 bucks.
Right, so we're basically saying it's going to pay for itself across time.
Well, we still have to use NRT for certain areas.
But I'm talking like if they don't show up for the athletic event, we use the bus, we're saving money, so. If they show up to drive us. Right, so it's basically going to pay for itself across time.
Over time.
Okay.
Thank you. The second budget amendment is because we fell short of net school spending last year, we fell short by $1,433,052. The Department of Ed has asked that we actually start including this into our current year budget on the shortfall from the previous year, just so that we don't lose track of the amount that we need to catch up in net school spending. So they've asked that we move it into the budget, and at which point I'll then reallocate it through the budget for things like equipment that we buy as needs come up and other eligible expenses for that.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion to approve the budget amendment, the adjusted budget amendment? So approved. Do we have a second?
A second. Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
All right. And then the final item is to talk about the track capital project. I brought some visuals because there's a lot going on here. So the big chart you see in front of you, and I'll try to spell as much of this out for those on the phone as I can without being overburdening and reading too many numbers here, but I guess I'm going to start at the bottom of the sheet, kind of on the lower left, there's a total breakdown of the budget for needed to get the track and field project done now. Initially, we had gone into this project estimating a $4 million budget, so it was going to be 1.5 million from the bond bill, 1 million from a special earmark grant with help from Senator Kennedy, and then 1.5 million used by Greater Lowell Tech out of our adult ed or our pay-to-play programs. So that was how we were getting to 4 million. We got our cost estimate back on the building itself out there, so outside of the track and field, the track and field number, sorry, let me back up. The track and field number came in pretty close to where we were thinking, came in about 3.3 million, so we figure a little bit of contingency, and then we would have roughly 400,000 to 500,000 to rebuild the bathroom snack shack building. The estimate we got back for the snack shack bathroom building was 1.2 million. That was a professional cost estimate from a construction company, so I did call and asked for clarification because it seemed a bit out of line. Mind you, this is a seasonal building, it's not fully heated through the winter, this isn't even with a fully functioning kitchen, this was just the setup that could maybe be turned into a kitchen eventually. Uh, so the, the pricing did seem a bit high, we went back, I asked the cost estimator, like, are there something we're missing here, a reason for the big cost? Um, they just said, in order to mobilize a commercial, or a, a firm to do commercial construction, um, really, a small building like this, eleven hundred square feet, not their, not their go-to, so they're not really, they're not built for mobilizing, constructing, and leaving in, at such a low cost and for such a small project. So, with all of that, we started to look at, how are we gonna get this done, and there's two different options. Um, one would be, and, and the timing of funding is, makes it a little bit more difficult. Um, we don't have the bond bill signed yet for one point five million of the projected funding that we needed. Um, so in order to get this done, we had to look at, what do we have guaranteed, we've got, um, our one point five million that we were gonna use, and we've got one million in the special earmark grants, we've got two point five of roughly three point three that we need at least to get the track and the field piece done, and we started talking about and looking at with the Department of Ed, the Department of Labor, and the Attorney General's Office, is, is building the bathroom building a, an acceptable school project, uh, for student work to be done, which it is, we've talked to the towns, um, it's actually the way that Greater Lawrence built theirs when they had their field renovations and things done, they did their bathroom building with students, um, and staff in-house. Um, so we're looking at possibly doing that to reduce the cost, um, but we still need three point three to get going, we're at two point five in available funding right now. Um, so the way that we could achieve this is, um, of the three point three for the field and track projects, about four hundred thousand of that is the, simply the sprayed surface on top of the, on top of the track. Um, so we could do all of the associated work, um, and wait until next year's budget to include the additional funding needed from excess and deficiency for that spray. Um, that doesn't really disrupt the schedule too much, other than the track team losing yet another season, um, that would bring them to, I think, their fifth or sixth season that they haven't been able to host home events. Now, if the bond bill happens, from now through the fall, we're still on someone's schedule for that, we still anticipate it would get done in the fall, it's just a matter of we don't have a guarantee on that funding at the moment. Um, so in order to get this done, or keep schedule or keep close to schedule, um, we would have to push that piece. Um, that's really the only piece that can be moved out independently of the others, um, all the others are too entwined to pull a piece off or separate the project. So, the. No, I didn't track where I'm at, where I'm at, so, in order to do that initial piece now, like I said, we've got the two point five, we would have to dig into some savings, we've got some available funding in our revolving account for building use, um, and a couple other revolving accounts that allow capital expenditure for this project, so we would be able to dig into those without affecting excess and deficiency right now. Um, get at least up to the three million dollar mark, which gets us done everything except for the spray this, into this fall, and then come back for the spray, or, you know, knock on wood, we get the bond bill in June, July. The funding becomes a non-issue at that point, will be done by fall. Um, I think it's still a good idea to have the students do the bathroom building, but at that point, we'll have the flexibility to make that decision, determine if it's, um, you know, if it does make sense to indeed have our students do it, rather than go outside for the funding. Um, so what I've provided is a two-column report in the middle of the page here that shows you what happens on a year-over-year basis to our excess and deficiency balance. If we do the project, this is all assuming we don't get the bond bill in this middle calculation. Um, so this is assuming we don't get the bond bill, and what does this do to our excess and deficiency or savings balance, so, um, as of now, where we stand is at the bottom of the first three lines, um, what we have available for funding, uh, for the project, and what our E and D balance is roughly five hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, um, going into next year. I've included estimates of some items that I expect to close to excess and deficiency, um, things that we talked about a little bit earlier, like the transportation reimbursement above bu- budget. Um, there are other items that we get, like investment income isn't generally included in our budget, um, because of the way the rates have been pushed by the Fed. Um, this is actually becoming a significant amount of money, it wasn't in previous years, um, and it's not something you can really bank on, so we don't include it, which means un-incl- or unbudgeted revenue closes directly to excess and deficiency at the end of the year. So you pick up a little bit of this and that over each, over each year, um, at the end of FY, or at the end of FY twenty-four, so the end of next year, when we get our certified excess and deficiency, assuming we commit six hundred thousand for the finishing of the track project, um, I expect the balance would still decrease a bit, um, from where we stand today, down to about four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Um, and then by twenty twenty, or by the end of twenty twenty-five, fiscal twenty-five, um, we would recover our excess and deficiency balance, um, to that two point one-ish million dollars. Um, just because of the time it takes for things to close from excess and deficiency, it really sort of lags two years, like the mon- the number we got certified today was for the, or certified for this year was for the end of FY twenty-two, so you're always using two years behind, so what we closed in FY twenty-two is what we use to pay for the FY twenty-four budget. Um, so the items that we closed next year would be the ones available for the FY twenty-six budget, and that's where we have that big transfer to operating, which is how the balance recuperates. Um, I've also showed in the column next to that left column, what excess and deficiency looks like if we don't move forward with the project right now. Um, you know, eventually, it looks like we're going to max out our available, or max out our balance by the end of FY twenty-five, um, available for the FY twenty-six budget. Um, and it should also be noted that, um, if the project wasn't to move forward at this point, the other, um, reason that it's, it's kind of top of mind and, and important for us to move on the budget, or on this project that I think now, um, is that the special earmark grant, which provides a million dollars of the funding to this, um, expires with the budget year, so as of June thirtieth, if we don't have it committed and ready to be spent, um, it goes away. So, there's the opportunity cost of that, that becomes lost.
Anybody have any questions? No, I mean, I can go so many directions, I have questions far enough to pack, I mean, I know, I wanna give them to you guys first.
Someone's gonna have a question, that was a lot right there.
I guess, no, I guess my first thing is I, I really wanna see the kids do the project.
Excuse me?
I'm up for it.
I'm trying.
I mean, I, I'd like to see the kids do the, the project, to say this to one point two, I think that's what we're about, I think, you know, it'll show the community how good we are, and it's a, it's a project that we should take on ourselves.
Well, the snack shack and the bathrooms.
I think it would be a good idea for the kids here and maybe open it up to community members as well, and it'll be a greater little community project.
Right. Right, I also.
With our kids, our teachers, and anybody in the community that wants to donate their time or their resources to help us.
Right, alumni, I think that'd be a great idea.
Yeah.
I mean, my second thing is, and I know a little bit about the one point five, the bond bill, because, well, obviously you know it through the union and stuff, and I've been inquiring about when it's gonna be released, it's, it, it's sitting on the governor's desk.
That's what we heard.
Senator Kennedy's working, I know he's working hard, it's just a signature, and it's gonna get released.
It's passing the budget, is what it is, it's passing the fifty-four billion dollar budget.
Supposedly that's tomorrow, or the next, supposedly that's tomorrow, so, I, I, I say we, my thing is, go right after it go, and I, I, I would hope, with a lot of people on the board, we can call enough people to, to the governor, hey, we need that one point five, and it'll drop in before, and I think our track team will be hosting a meeting over next year. I, I don't foresee, I think the one point five's coming, I just, I think it'll come during the, during the.
Well, that's the elephant in the room, unfortunately.
Right, but I mean, we have to go forward.
I believe it's coming as well, because I know that we've done a lot of legwork.
Right, I just think we will.
The superintendent's done the legwork, I know the school committee.
And I think we have the support of the senator, you know.
I, right, right, but I also know that it's sitting on the governor's desk, and it still has to be passed, and there can't be any cuts made to it, I can't see any cuts happening because last year they had to give away money to each resident across the state of Massachusetts because they ended up with too much money. But I, it does seem to me.
And I, I see the governor as being a proponent of vocational education, and also a proponent of athletics, being, uh, a former athlete herself.
And, and I do think that the track is, I mean, especially when you put the grant for the one million dollars expires in two months and fifteen days, essentially. Um, and then we would lose that one million dollars, so, we have that million dollars in the bank, is the time is ticking on us and we can't lose it. It also seems like, and we've been having this conversation for many years, is that we need a new track.
Right.
So a track is extremely important, and it's also part of the whole, of the, the whole ADA project, which is throughout.
It's a track, making the, the bigger, it's not a track, but making the athletic facility, uh, handicap accessible.
Right, and the athletic, which is the bleachers as well, correct?
The bleachers, the, the restrooms, all have to be handicapped accessible.
ADA compliant.
Right, ADA compliant, so.
So, so one million, we already have, but we have to spend, the other million and a half, sure, I believe it's coming our way, but nobody really knows until you get the signature, right? But it, it seems like we definitely need a track. Uh, can we live off of this E and D, you know, being at the end of calendar year, next year, four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, yes, because we will be having our net school spending to meet, and if we have to tighten our budget, if we have to tighten our year next year, I'm sure we can do that.
And there's some things we can do, like, uh, just from strategic, and sorry to cut you off, but just from strategically, you know, we also included budget, uh, in the budget for next year, uh, money for, you know, an OPEB contribution, and money for a school, school bus purchases. I would be inclined, knowing that we have a little bit of variability and a little bit of a, uh, change in need, to put, hold those items until later in the year. Um, that then adds another two hundred thousand roughly, one ninety, I think, um, budgeted from excess and deficiency that would, we wouldn't necessarily have to need to use. I would come back with another vote next year for the budget and say, all right, we're not gonna use those items, um, just so that it closes back to excess and deficiency to move that budget, or move that number up if we saw something that was coming as a need that we wouldn't be able to afford within the net school spending parameters of, well, most of our funding. Um, so there is a little bit of flexibility there, it's not, not a huge amount, but we've already started to think strategically about what items can be put off, or what items, uh, might be able to be delayed just until we're really hammering out and solidified on all the costs.
Sure, and I hate personally to have a track laid down, but not have it sprayed. Um, that seems, you know, a little, you know, tough to swallow, we're looking at a brand-new track, and the kids are ready for a meet, and we're ready to sort of.
I, I would write the first.
Make it work.
Right, I think, I'm hopeful we get it done, I think it's gonna get done, I think, like you said, the one million dollars, we're gonna lose it, so we have to stop.
That's correct, and the other thing is that million and a half, which I think we all believe, at the end, when that million and a half bond comes in, if it comes in, and we're all very, not only hopeful, but we really believe with a high, a percentage that it is going to come in, that at the end of the twenty-five budget, heading into the twenty-six budget, our E and D would be back above two million dollars.
Yes.
Which would be at about three and a half, four percent of our operating costs.
Yeah, we'll be right back, right back in that range.
As long as everything goes as we expect, and we believe that all the work has been done to it, and as far as Lee says, or as far as the chairman goes with the snack shack, sure. You know, I don't know if there's any reason to spend one point two million dollars, um, just because the, the construction company says the project is too small for us, but this is our general number that we charge, and that doesn't sit well with, not only the public, but with us.
Superintendent made a great point, I, I honestly believe with our alumni out there, and our kids, we, we build, we all see the, the building they, they build outside and take down every year. Here we go, here's a great, this one's about coming down, I think some of our alumni will help pitch in, and I think, I think we'll be fine.
I think it's a great spirit, Billy, you've done a great job building a team inside the school, and for these kids to be able to go right by this years later saying, we're the ones that built that, maybe we can even do something on the plaque at the end of it.
Right, creates further school pride.
I mean, think about, we have kids, we have, I know my son came here, I went here, kids that are building, now their kid might be playing football on the synthetic turf, we're allowing them, we're getting, and, hey, I built that.
I'm sure if we opened it up, we would get, this is a facility that's used by our communities and our community members, so I really believe that they would wanna give back if we.
And there are, and there are graduates here that are entering, entering their retirement age, and they may want to be a part of this, you know, option.
Yeah, on the couple days we got there with the kids, yeah.
Yeah, even if they spend two days a month down here, uh, here, so.
I think, I think we use the kids, I think that's a whole lot.
I think it's a learning experience for them, and really something that they can take pride in.
So, Mike, is this information only, or do we need a motion to move forward with what we've already discussed?
It's information only, just because the, the one piece that would, you need to sort of commit to right now is, uh, if you look at just above where it says available for FY twenty-five budget in the middle of the page, there's that projected use of six hundred thousand in E and D next year, now you can't vote the head of actually having it, but, um, it's just making sure that everyone, everyone's aware that by saying going forward, that in a worst-case scenario, we're committing to using that six hundred thousand dollars out of E and D next year.
And we lose the million dollars if we do not commit with the idea that we may have to spend the six hundred thousand dollars out of E and D next year.
It's possible the, the million can be refiled, but then it's also not guaranteed at that point, it's in the bank right now.
Okay, let's, okay, I think we use our bank account.
Now, let's go, I think we, I don't see us losing that million dollars, I say we just go forward, we'll, we'll deal with it, it's all hinging, basically, it sounds like on that one point five, which, okay, we'll, we'll stop making calls and getting this done.
And it's great that you brought this up to us, right, and then we have this discussion.
I wasn't comfortable signing the contract, not knowing the money was there.
We're very transparent.
We'll get, we'll get it done, it'll get done.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mike, thank you.
Thank you, Mike, thank you.
Do we have any old business? Do we have any new business?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is something I recently found out, and it was something that was brought up at our last meeting about the chowder here at the school, that the culinary department and the students recently competed in Boston, and we won first prize, is, is that true?
I can't speak to that, I'm sorry.
Okay, this did come from a culinary teacher?
Okay.
There were, there were only, uh, three, uh, people in.
Are you, so, no, no, the Taste of the Town was for.
It wasn't the Taste of the Town, this took place in Boston. And I believe, uh, spoke to, uh, culinary instructor this yesterday, it said that they went to Boston, and there was a couple of other competitors, and that our chowder came in.
That's wonderful.
And we discussed it at the last meeting, 'cause someone said, do we make our own chowder? And I broke up and said, yes, unaware of this going on, but, but yes, this is.
I don't recall, but it could have been, if it was a month ago, are you saying?
Well.
I know that we just recently, at Taste of the Town in Wilburn, won an award for best sweet treat, and that was our culinary, uh, sophomores who went with instructors Janice Moscow, Sarah Samaris, and Mr. Gentry with our grade ten sophomores down to the Wilburn Taste of the Town.
I think I saw that, I saw that.
And they did a wonderful coffee smoothie with a mocha chip cookie, and it was really the hit of the Taste of the Town.
Not much chowder than a mocha. I, I also recently saw.
I just looked over for the soup, I was hoping that there might have been some chowder.
So, if you, I probably just can't recall that, that that happened, but I would say if, if someone told you, then it did happen.
It came from the horses.
Okay, well, there you go.
And it said that, I believe it was at Copley Plaza or something like that, and there was just a few competitors, and that we came in for us.
That's great.
And congratulations to the, uh, you know, culinary and hospitality.
Question to Mr. Moore?
Sure.
Yes?
Mr. Moore, is it true that the, uh, culinary, the recipe in question was adopted by you set years back?
What did he say?
He said, was that recipe in?
Was that your recipe?
I'm, I'm not gonna answer that.
Take the fifth.
Take the fifth.
No, well, I, I wanna give credit to it, you know, whatever, I don't wanna take the credit.
I guess, also on the new business, yesterday was a science fair, I got to attend the science fair yesterday, I'll tell you, it was unbelievable. I think they went through a hundred and fifteen tables, it took me about an hour and fifteen minutes from one side of the gym to the other, and it was, it was really good, so I wanna thank Carol Chisholm, Chris Burns, I don't know, wanted, I only saw them, I'm sure you know more than.
Carol Chisholm, Chris Burns, and the whole science department for putting on an awesome science fair.
And I, and I went last year, yeah.
I think there was over five hundred competitors, and it was unbelievable.
My favorite one was MCAS, uh, one of the students had his MCAS, you know, acceptable, and I asked him, he went through the whole hypothesis, it was pretty good, I'm not gonna give you the answer.
I had it on my calendar, but I couldn't, the one day, even being retired, it had to be somewhere today, and I really wanted to go and check it out.
It was good, it was, it was nice.
Great event, also was Greater Little Military Day, so the army was out here, out in the back parking lot, and presented, I think they had a tank here, and had kids, you know, put on a real big show, and it was greatly.
And, uh, when I, when I came in, had the kids going out in the tent.
Yep, so that, the, we have the tent up for students that have the opportunity to go out during their lunchtime and eat outside and get some fresh air. So a lot of great things happening.
Do we have anything else on the new business?
Yeah.
Any community personnel, uh, motions? Any report of subcommittees? All right, can I get a motion to go to executive session, uh, to, for some contract negotiations?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes?
Mr. Bajo?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getcher?
Yes.
Take a ten-minute recess, Mr. Chairman.
Take a ten-minute break.
Mr. Lemay?
Roll call. Yes.
Mr. Bajo?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getcher?
Yes. After we, uh, talked in executive session, I'd like to take a, uh, make, like to look for a motion to approve two and a half percent salary increase for the school year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four for the following positions, all non-contractual employees, the assistant principal, school business administrator, and school committee recording secretary.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes?
Mr. Bajo?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Getcher?
Yes.